Simmons.
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry.
Yes.
Yes. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Manley, can you hear? Hear her?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Our right committee has been called to order. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can move to E.
We can move to E, okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
I second that as vice chair stated.
It's been moved and seconded. The agenda has been adopted. Do we have any public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I would like to take a roll call for the agenda, the adoption of the agenda.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. To A, we have public comments. The public comments for the purpose of the rehiring or retire employee Jill Smith. Are we going to wait for her?
Just wait three minutes.
Okay. We will wait three minutes for Ms. Jill Smith. Okay, since... Oh, that's not her, I'm sorry. Okay, that's right. So I will call for a motion to adjourn.
My motion.
I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Meeting, special meeting adjourned. I forgot, Ms. Janice, you had called her off, I'm sorry.
No problem. Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Now, meetings adjourned.
Five twenty-three.
Our regular meeting starts at five thirty, so we have a break for a few minutes.
Good evening again. I would like to call the January eighteenth regular meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Can we stand again for the Pledge of Allegiance? Next on our agenda is the reading of the mission statement that will be read by Christian Jeter from the middle school.
The mission of Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere.
Thank you very much.
Christian, that was an excellent job.
Thank you. In item E, I would like a motion to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes. We have a resolution to fill a Board of Education vacancy.
And also, I would like action on the agreement for Westward that does our reimbursement or obtains our Medicaid eligible expenses and reimbursement for the period of July first, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. We pay Westward $34,848. We don't necessarily have to bring that to the Board, but the federal government, because it's federal government funds, wants a fully executed agreement. So I needed to bring that onto you guys. Okay?
For action, please.
For action?
Mm-hmm.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda with changes.
I second that as stated by the vice chair.
It has been properly moved. And second, are there any questions? Ms. Allen, would you please start a row?
Yes. Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. And now we'll have the reading of the resolution. The resolution to fill Board of Education vacancy, whereas a vacancy has been called on the Board of Education by reason of resignation, and whereas this Board of Education has the legal authority to fill a vacancy for the unexpired term, therefore, now therefore, it is resolved by a majority vote, all of the remaining members of the Board of Education of the Trotwood Madison School District that Lawana Carrington be and hereby is appointed to serve as a member of the Board of Education of this school district for the unexpired term of Denise Moore ending in December 31st, 2025. I'd like to take a vote.
Yes.
I want to make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution to fill the Board of Education and vacancy.
I second.
It's been properly moved. And second, Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes.
So at this time, President Cherry, I would like to administer the oath of office to our new board member, and then she can sit in her rightful place.
Yes.
I say again, I solemnly swear that I am faithful to the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I am faithfully and impartially in charge of my duties as a member of the Board of Education and as a board member of said, the Trotwood Madison City Schools, and my family and my relatives, and according to this law, now and ever after, and hereafter, to be active in my continuing, one hundred and seventy, and seventy-one, and seventy-two, and seventy-three, and seventy-four, and seventy-five, and seventy-six, and seventy-seven, and seventy-eight, and seventy-nine, and eighty-one, and eighty-two, and eighty-three, and eighty-four, and eighty-five, and eighty-six, and eighty-seven, and eighty-eight, and eighty-nine, and ninety-one, and ninety-two, and ninety-three, and ninety-four, and ninety-five, and ninety-six, and ninety-seven, and ninety-eight, and ninety-nine, and one thousand nine hundred and one hundred and fifty. At this point, we would like to take the picture.
At this point, we will recess for a board picture.
So we're going to take it down there by that hand.
Ms. Lawana Carrington.
Welcome.
Welcome. And now we will go to community comments. Do we have any community comments?
There are none.
Okay. Since there are...
Consent agenda.
Since there are no community comments, we will go to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of December 7th, 2023, work session, December 13th, 2023, board retreat, and December 21st, 2023, regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I second that as stated.
It has been properly moved. And second, that the consent agenda has been approved. Are there any questions? Being known, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes. If I can get this to go right.
Okay.
Who's second did I say?
I seconded.
Okay, Mrs. Carrington?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. Now, to item five, the treasurer's report.
I have several items this evening, and I'm going to add C for the agreement, but I will start with A, approval of the December financial reports. We normally, well, we had a finance committee meeting this evening. Our finance committee consists of two board members, board member Dion Simmons and board member Sidney Davis. We did go through almost 20 reports. Those reports are attached to Board Docs in the executive tab for the other board members that obviously did not attend the finance committee. So there are three reports that we do ask, I'm asking for your approval. The first one is the cash reconciliation for the month of December. We have bank statement and investment balances that totals $28,848,421.59. We have outstanding checks and we have small adjustments, making the adjusted bank balance to $28,715,780.68. That does match exactly to our district balance, our balance on our financial systems or meta, as we call it. So our variance bank to book is zero, which obviously we always want to happen. The second report is our spending plan for the month of December. The first column is our actuals for the month of December, and then to your far right is your fiscal year to date actual, and our fiscal year does encompass July through June. So we are at the halfway point of fiscal year '24. And if you look at, we have total revenues for the month of December of $2.4 million, and then our expenses were four point, almost $4.4 million. So we did have excess of our expenses over our revenues of almost $2 million. However, our fiscal year to date, we did have more revenue than expenses, and that totaled $897,806.59. And then the last report are checks over $1,000. And I am just, we, the finance committee members did look over the list. There were a couple of questions that I was able to answer. One was Yonder, Y-O-N-D-R, Inc., Yonder, and those are the Yonder pouches that we just implemented at the high school. Is that correct? At the high school? At the high school. And I'm not sure if there's... Oh, there was a question about the Norma J. Ross Memorial Foundation. We did cut a check for $2,660. I vaguely remember that Thought Athletics, I thought, did a fundraiser and they donated the money back to Norma Ross. the money back to Norma Ross. So if there weren't any other questions, I would ask for action on that, please. What was that question? She said, "Do you have any questions?"
No.
You have any questions?
Any questions?
Um, I do have one question. The finance committee's report, the reports that they went over with you, should we not have time to review that before we accept whatever the financial report is?
So all of, all the information is sent out on Tuesday? So it's sent out...
So it's the same stuff we did earlier?
Absolutely, exactly the same. And so we make sure that if it's not the same, we come to you and say it's not the same, and then we have to vote on it separately. But everything is the same. We do send it out to the, to the board members before that.
Okay. I just want to make, make sure that I'm clear on this. Procedurally, though, should the finance committee, that our board representatives be able to report back to us as the full board before we actually vote on the financials?
So that has never been the practice. That's why you have a finance committee, so that they can go over and that they basically are your representatives for the finance. We, the, the, the information that we're looking at is for December, and so by the time if you went back and did something else, we would've gone to the next month. So it's flowing very quickly, but that's what we've done, and not to say we can't do something else, but time-wise, that's why we have a finance committee, and that's why we send out the financials prior to the board meeting.
Yeah, understood. I mean, I got the chance to review that, but I just was making sure that we were procedurally in the right place with the finance committee meeting with you and then us coming and voting on the financials. Not a big deal, just a question.
So for 13 years, like I said, not to say that you can't do something else, but I've been here 13 years, and that's how we've done it for 13 years. So if you want something changed, you can...
Okay.
So also, any questions that are raised in the financial meeting is also shared at the board meeting. So if Mr. Simmons asks any questions, or asks about a check or something like that, she'll...
It was more, but it's not about the information, it's just more just making sure we're right procedurally.
Oh, okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
At our finance committee meeting, our biggest thing today or tonight, just to kind of skim up the last hour before we relate, our total adjustment and our outstanding balance pretty much have matched up. Our outstanding was about $128,080, and then our total adjusted was $28,007.09 per meta, and it was the same, thanks, Madam Treasurer, and thanks, Vice Chair, and thank you, Honorable Lumpkin, and President. I digress. I do get what you're saying, but I appreciate it.
I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report to approve the amended appropriations for FY 2024.
I'm sorry. Going back to five, I need the approval of the financial reports first.
Oh, okay. I need approval to accept the treasurer's December financial report.
I'm motioning.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you.
It has been properly moved and second, are there any questions? If none, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
I missed it, Mr. Lumpkin. I just didn't miss somebody. I was like, okay. And Mr. Lumpkin, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, the next item I'd like to bring to you is the amended appropriations for fiscal year 2024. The only change from last time that I brought the appropriations on November 16th, 2023, was for Fund 507, and that was for the ARP. ARP means American Rescue Plan, American Rescue Plan, homeless. We increased that fund by $109,438.49. And so the total appropriations are $58,535.648.94. And so I'm asking for action on that item this evening.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the treasurer's to approve the amended appropriations for FY 2024.
I'm motioning. So you got it. I second.
It's been properly, properly moved and second, are there any questions? No questions, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes.
And last, on 5C, I would like action from the board to approve the contract agreement for Ohio Medicaid School Program Services with Westward. And what I did is I wanted information, is that Westward allows us to recoup Medicaid expenses. So I went back for three years. On June 30th, 21, we got a check for $381,552.35. December 20th, 22, we got a check of $442,115.34. And recently, September 19th, 23, we received a check in the amount of $392,218.45. And so obviously, this agreement is very, very important for us to recoup some of those Medicaid dollars. And so I'm asking for action on that one this evening.
I need a motion to accept the treasurer's request in reference to the Ohio Medicaid Agreement.
I'll make the motion.
I second that as stated.
And that, that agreement is in front of everyone.
Yes.
It's been properly moved and second, are there any questions? Hearing none, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes.
And that is all I have this evening.
Next item, superintendent comments.
All right, um, for my report, I have four things tonight. The first is the approval of the 2024-25 school year calendar. You should all have that in front of you, and I would like to just share a little bit of information about that. We talked at our last meeting about how we developed that, and working with TMEA and staff members taking a vote, and then we select the one that is the most what everybody wants. So overall, I wanted to give you some highlights on this calendar. We have 186 teacher days. That's the same as this year. It includes two comp days for teacher conferences. We have 175 student days, again, same as this year. We have five in-service workdays for our teachers. That's what we had this year. They're just placed in a different way this year. So in August, we'll have three days of teacher in-service or workday, combination of those professional development, planning, and then some time for them to set up their classrooms. The students will start school on Monday, August 12. Our next day where we have a vacation is September Labor Day, which is September 2nd. In October, will be a Teacher Records Day, October 11th, and then a Teacher Conference Comp Day, October 18th. And what happens is the teachers stay into the evening so their parents can come in for their conferences. So what we do is we give them, they do two days, we comp them a full day off. In November, there's Teacher Professional Day, November 5th, which is also Election Day, and that's early in quarter two. And then we also have Teachers and Students Thanksgiving Holiday, which will be November 25th to the 29th. It's a full week again this year, I mean, this upcoming year as it was this past year. Then December and January, we have a Teacher Records Day, December 20th. Records Day is the day that when they finish the quarter, they have to go through and, you know, tally their grades and all of that. Teacher-Student Winter Break is December 23rd through January 3rd, again, two full weeks. We have Teacher Professional Development, which will be January 6th, the beginning of Semester Two. In February, there's a Teacher Conference Comp Day, February 14th. President's Day is February 17th. March, we have Teacher's Records Day on March 14th. Spring Break will be March 24th through 28th. That's at the end of March. Easter in the, in this year is not until April 17th, which is in the middle of state testing. Typically, if we can, we try to connect those things, but that didn't work out for this year. In April, state testing occurs throughout the month. In May, the last day for students is May 23rd. Then we have Teachers' Records Day, and their last day is May 27. Anybody? That's it for the calendar. I do need a motion. I'd like for that to be approved tonight.
I do have one question. What day is graduation? Did I miss that?
That is a good question. You did not miss it, because I did not say it. I will let you know.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the school calendar.
I'm motioning. I second that as stated.
It's been properly moved and second, are there any questions? Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. This motion has passed for the school calendar.
Okay, thank you. Item B is approval of the Robotics Club overnight out-of-state field trip to Flint, Michigan. I received the request, I am requesting approval for Trotwood Madison High School's Robotics Club to travel to Flint, Michigan on January 26th through 28th, 2024. The trip will be supervised by Lieutenant Colonel Odell A. Graves and Staff Sergeant First Class Samuel Brown, and will be paid for with JROTC funding. Students will travel by charter bus. Students will compete in the Kettering University Aerial Drone Competition, and upon return, they will conduct an after-action review to discuss the strengths and weaknesses. I would like approval for that, as, as you can see, that this will happen this month.
Yes. Vice, Vice President has a question?
How many students are going? Dr. Cosby?
Could we do our motion first and then we ask the questions?
Oh, yes. I need a motion to approve the Robotics Club overnight out-of-state field trip to Flint, Michigan.
I'm motioning. I'll second.
It's been properly moved and second.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And then Mr. Lumpkin?
Are there any questions?
The number of students?
The number.
He does not have the number of students on his request, but it is grade levels nine through 12. I was looking to see if I can tell by the charter bus how many. I can get that information to you.
Any other questions? If none, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. The field trip request has been approved.
Thank you. Okay, item C is to donations. I have a donation. I would like to recommend, this is from Mr. Smith, that the Board of Education accept an automated external defibrillator worth $2,500 from the following below, which is white, allen Chevrolet. And the second donation is to Madison Park Elementary School. Madison Park Elementary School has received a check in the amount of $1,000. The check reflects a donation given by Reese and Shirley Turner. Mr. Reese Turner is a Trotwood alumni. The donation will be used for student and staff activities. I'm asking for the board's approval to deposit it in the principal's fund, and that's from Ms. Tammy Rizzo Sterner. I would like approval for the donation.
I'll do the question later. I would like approval for the donations of Trotwood Madison Athletic Department and Madison Park Elementary. Excuse me.
I make a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
I second that as stated.
It's been properly moved and second, are there any questions? I do have one. You said the, the $1,000 will be transferred into the what?
The principal's fund. So our principals have, they get allocated money to do activities with their students and to, and a lot of those are incentive-type things, like they may take them on field trips, things like that. So Ms. Sterner is asking if she can have that money put into the principal's fund, her principal's fund.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes. Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes to accept the donations for the Trotwood Madison Athletic Department and Madison Park Elementary.
Okay, and then last, I have the approval of our personnel agenda. So I'd like to start with our certified personnel agenda, Agenda A, a recommendation for the approval of the following certified supplementals for the '23-'24 school year. And, and this is in front of you, so you can see who the staff members are and their position, building, and stipend. A2 is a recommendation for the approval of the following certified adjustment in training. And if you look at the current salary and then you look at the adjustment, you can see that that person has added to their, to their training. Next, we have our classified personnel agenda, which is Agenda B. B1 is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified resignation for the '23-'24 school year. B2 is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified new hire for the '23-'24 school year. B3 is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified adjustment in pay for the '23-'24 school year. B4 is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified staff to be used on an as-needed basis for the '23-'24 school year. And I do need this for approval.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I second.
It's been properly moved to, to adopt and accept the personnel agenda. Miss, are there any questions? If no questions, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes to adopt the personnel agenda. And next, we have discussion and/or follow-up items. Do we have any? Okay. If none, next, we have comments from our board members.
Will we start with the treasurer?
We'll start with the treasurer.
Um, I am sent this out to the board today. I, um, from, through email. I also attached it to board docs, and I also sent, made a hard copy in front of you. Um, just some, um, highlights. Uh, we did receive a $5,000 check from Gated Properties Global. And this, this check was received because they were unable to fulfill their promise for internship slots. And one of the reasons they said that they could not is because the building has sat vacant without the opportunity to hire interns. So they felt that they, they, in good faith, to give the district $5,000. So we received it. I'm not sure where we want to put it, or where you, you might want for us to put those dollars. Um, I wanted to update you on the 2023 audits. We did receive an unmodified opinion from the auditor, which is the pious that you can get. I'm very, very excited about that. You know, i- i- if anyone knows when they go through an audit, you're, you're nervous about various things. I mean, there's so many things that they look at, just a zillion of things. The salaries, the contracts, um, just a lot of things that we do financially. So I am very, very pleased to let you guys know that our audit had an unmodified opinion. Um, I did, um, go to a auditor's update, and I'm sure you've seen it in the paper, um, on the, um, he was outlining what's outlining what the growth in the real estate market ha- um, would do to your property values and your property tax bills. They do anticipate a four to six percent increase, um, in your tax bills. And then, good news to the residents of Trotwood. The county auditor did call me and, um, indicated to me that they were going to reduce the millage on the bond levy from ten point one-one mils to nine point oh-seven mils, because they felt that they would collect enough money for us to pay our, um, principal and interest payments. So I thought that was huge. So in the past, we've had to increase it, and now they were able to decrease slightly. So I was very happy about that. So I just wanted to let you guys, um, know that in terms of, on the financial side. And that's all I had this evening.
Thank you. I do have one question in reference to the $5,000. We, as a board, decide on where that money should be placed, or how it should be spent, or?
Um, yes, no.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is because the board agreed to give Gateway Property, Gateway Properties, um, eh, eh, um, what's the word I'm looking for? A tax abatement. Thank, thank you. Whoever said that? Thank you, Ms. Bruno. Tax abatement. So, so to answer your question, the board did give the, the gated, um, properties that distinction, so.
How, how long?
And I, I would think the $5,000 should go back to, to me, to students, since it was for the in, uh, for the unfilled internship. So, I don't know, a thousand dollars per school? I don't know. So I'm just throwing that out. But we do have six schools.
For school?
For what?
So.
The only reason I'm, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm just asking a question, because, um, internships, I'm thinking of high school students. So I, I'm trying to see how it would fare with the elementary, you know, students. So I'm at, I'm in the learning stage, so can someone jump in, help me?
I like what you said.
What?
No, I mean, the $5,000 probably should be allocated to high school, because it's for internships. I guess my question is, how long is that abatement for, and how many times have they actually had to do something like this? Do we know that information?
Off the top of my head, 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 this month, I think it was fifteen years, but I want to go and double-check that. And then I'll, I'll go, and it happened last year.
It happened last year. So let me go and double-check that. I don't want to say it's one thing and it's not. So let me double-check that, and I'll, I'll let you guys know.
And maybe this is a-
I'm almost thinking it was a long, long period of time.
I understand that the agreement was made last year. So we have fifteen years moving forward. The tax abatement.
Do they have an active program that they actually have in place that we're, that we're supposed to be following to help them meet the, the standards of that abatement? And that, and they basically missed it, and that's why they're giving us the five grand?
Well, one of the, the commitments that they, um, the, um, the past board member Vanessa Jeter Freeman was very adamant that because we, we had done this, Trotwood had done that, that they wanted to give, they, she wanted them to give us something. And so she wanted them to agree that they would hire our students and their, um, and, and, and their business. But the business never got off the ground yet. It's, didn't get going like they thought. I mean, it's, it's not open at this point. I'm not sure. Yeah.
Is that the new building that's on? I'm not sure if that, Allah?
Yeah. Yes, yes. It's that long building, yes, on the corner right there, yes.
So we get a fifty-year abatement to a business that's not open, is what I'm hearing?
Well, I think that was to attract business. You know, so when people want to come into a community and, and they say, will the school give us an abatement, will the district? And so we said to try to encourage this business, this growth, yes, we will. But it didn't happen as fast as they thought it would. So I think that it's pretty, um, pretty good that they're saying, okay, we somewhat promised you that this is what would happen, and it didn't. So to make it right, because they're still wanting an abatement, right? So they, I think this is their way of trying to say that they, um, intended to keep that promise.
And so, I guess, question, so the $5,000, they've given it to us for this is the consecutive year? The two, second year, or this first year?
First time.
First year, okay.
This is the first time, yes.
I mean, we do realize that $5,000 on a tax abatement is not-
It's not equitable.
It's not an equitable solution to not having a program in place. I just want to make sure we're-
Yeah, no, we, we understand.
I do have one more question. So this internship-
Keep it to your mic.
So this internship process, if it works? So is this going to be a one-year agreement that they will, or is this going to be a continuous agreement that they will hire interns? From Trot- from Trotwood Madison?
We're hoping it will be a continuous agreement. That was what we thought when they said it. And once they open, they will do internships ongoing.
All right, one more question, and I'm gonna let it go, but I promise you guys. Do we have in place at the high school now a per- a person who's over managing the internships for those abatements? Or is that something that we haven't reviewed yet?
Um, I think we have our counselors are the people who, you know, would talk to our students right now. And if it does, if, if it turns out that we did these businesses opening, and they are going to do internships, then that could definitely be something we need to look into. That's all, actually, is going to probably come up quite a bit, because as you know, we're, you know, going to be doing, and we're doing like CTE, um, work, manufacturing, um, there, even our business one, they potentially do interns. So right now, you know, that's in our process.
Okay.
Working it through.
So it's safe to say that we will, are we going to be hiring someone? Or are we going to be appointing someone to be over our internships?
Probably have to look at, like you said, finances and, and amount of work. If we, if we get enough, um, internships, which would be one for to justify hiring someone. Otherwise, you know, again, the counselors could take it on by alphabet. That's the way they're divvied up. So if your child gets doctoring B, then you would work with them on that. Or, um, you know, it could be like a department head if it happens to be things that fall in the math arena. Or so, so we would have to think that through. We also have two curriculum coordinators. One of them, our high school one, may take it on if it's not that many. So first, I'm sure we're going to try to use someone that's already here. If it grows big enough, then we could hire someone.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no, there's no percentage of workforce requirement for these businesses when they come to the Board of Education? Because we could-
No, I don't think we, um, had that in that particular contract, like a percentage.
You know what I mean, like the percentage of, like, they're going to hire so many people that actually live in Trotwood. So that we make sure that we're getting our bang for giving them the abatement in the first place.
Yeah, as, as we-
Because I, I want to be clear with everyone. When I go to C I C, when they come to us and they say, we want to have abatements for A, I think that we should have a process in place that, that holds businesses accountable to paying those taxes back. Because, I mean, so many times, we've had businesses stay for ten years and then just leave. Or in this case, so far, they haven't opened yet, and they've given us a nickel. And told us, you know, yay, we're going to give you $5,000 back. Literally one, one, not even one payroll cycle.
Yeah, we, and I hear Janice saying the same thing I'm saying too. We definitely would support that type of, um, conversation with them. And I have to say, the board, um, prior, I think, was pretty aggressive in, in saying what we wanted, but maybe we just didn't even have as big a, you know, picture, a big, as big a picture at the time.
Or deeper understanding.
Insist that we got internships was, you know, pretty good. Because we could have just said yes, right? But we, we know that there should be some give and take.
Yes.
That's a partnership.
If I recall, um, the conversation, it was to, um, allow so many internships for our students and so many employees from our community.
And we can go back and look at it, yeah. I, I would not be surprised if that's what it was, because we were pretty adamant about wanting, you know, some give and take. Yes, I plan to, anytime I send anything, I send it to the entire board. So I will send that, um, agreement to the entire board. You just have to go in. Thank you. I will send it to everyone. Is it my turn?
Yes.
I'm done. Okay. Give me one second. My computer died on those questions. All right, first off, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Carrington. Welcome to the board. Appreciate having you here. And then I just have a couple of things that I wanted to mention. If you'll remember, we had Dr. Hyacinth, Hyacinth Hall come in and speak to you all about being our art, artists in residence here. Well, she has a couple of really exciting things coming up, and I wanted to let you know about them. She is, um, representing us on a panel at the Ohioans and Space State House Gala on January twenty-fourth. At that gala, a painting will be unveiled for the rotunda of the Ohio State House in Columbus. And I wanted to share that with you, because she's very proud to be, um, representing, you know, the district. And she makes sure that people here Trotwood Madison. She also, um, has provided our district with the opportunity to participate in a peace march with the great grandson of Mahatma Gandhi. He'll be coming here, and he will be walking through, um, some of their buildings and speaking with their students. So we feel like that's a really great opportunity for our students. I wanted to just let you know that those things were happening. Also, I just want to put this on your mind, we're going to talk about it a lot more, but I'm not sure, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar, but maybe not how close it is. April eighth is going to be the full eclipse, which we will be right in line of in Dayton, Ohio, in this area. And so there are going to be lots of people here at the time, and schools are having to make the decision about whether or not to close for that day. Um, I want you to start thinking about it. It seems to most people, when you first say that, like, why would we do it? But I'll tell you this. If you were to call right now and try to get a hotel room anywhere in this area, you can't get them. Because it's that many people planning on being here. And even though it's just like a couple of minutes or so, there are people who are going to be here four days. And they're going to be lined up on the highway, and they're going to be ready to get their pictures. And so obviously, I'm advocating for the fact that we probably should close. And I do know that the majority of the schools have already started, you know, to make those, um, start having those conversations. So I'll bring it up again, but I wanted you to start checking it out. They also say you can't get a quarter party either for that day. Anybody trying to rent one, can't. Because people already got them lined up on the highways, so you're going to see them. Or not see them. You should have your eyes closed. All right, that's all I have. Ms. Cherry? So far, you've done a great job. I know you're still having an adjournment. Work with me, work with me. Okay, um, board comments. Mr. Lumpkin?
Think I've talked enough for the day, so I'm going to yield my, my time to the next person.
Okay. Mr. Sidney Davis?
I'm always going to say something. Uh, Ms. Carrington, thank you for, uh, hanging out with us today. I enjoyed your family and everybody that came. And, um, congratulations to our retiring, rehiring staff as well, our admin, our principals that are in the building, our directors, our restodial staff, um, any transportation people, the list goes on, all our educators. I love everybody. Um, but, um, just one last comment. I got about a minute left. Public schools, what we represent here is what I feel I represent. The values, the beliefs, our priorities of the community, our policies that will ensure our children and with maximum potential to, um, pursue our graduates after they graduate from Trotwood to ensue more enrollment and more positivity. You can see I'm rolling off the top as well. But, um, it's just those skills are very necessary for us to be first-in-the-month equals. And, um, thank you, Madam Treasurer, for our great, um, finance committee meeting today and Vice Chair. And, um, I just appreciate everybody. I digress.
Thank you. Ms. Carrington, Mrs. Carrington, do you have anything you would like to say?
I do.
Because my mic working is balanced.
I would first like to say thank you to the board members. And I am ecstatic about getting to work to help enhance the district in any way that we possibly can. I would like to say hello to Mr. Howard. He was one of the educators here when my daughters attended. They vote for out in the audience today. And thank you all for coming and participating, and thank you all for the work that you do.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Um, I would like to say welcome, Ms. Carrington. We look forward to working with you. Um, we are excited now to be fully staffed on the board. Um, we know we have lots of work to do, um, and with this team, I think we are very equipped. Um, we have a diverse, uh, group of individuals, and we are willing, uh, to stand up for our children in this district. Um, I thank, um, Ms. Allen, um, Ms. Kim Potter this week. I've asked a lot of questions, and I've been able to get everything that I've asked for. Um, so I thank you all in support and, and in the learning curve, I will continue to bug you. So I thank you and ask for your patience in advance. That's all I have.
Okay, well, welcome, Mrs. Carrington. I do want to say, um, congratulations to our students, who are just, um, extremely, just, just doing well and just putting forth the effort to continue to do well. I am very, very proud of our students, and thank you for our staff, who are, who are still hanging in with us. I want to just reiterate what Vice Chair, um, Ms. Simmons said about, um, you know, this is a great group of individuals that we're going to be working with. And, um, be patient with us as we are learning, and we're going to learn together. I just appreciate everyone. Um, I appreciate, um, Dr. Cosby, Superintendent. Congratulations, Ms. Janice Allen, on your audit. Looking forward to, um, continued success. And I also wanted to just thank Mr. Jeter, the student, who did a remarkable job with reading our mission statement. And that's all.
Guess I should say welcome and congratulations to you. Sorry about that.
You want that to be in the minutes, right?
Yes, if you put that in the record, that I, that I congratulated Ms. Carrington, I wasn't the only one who didn't say congratulations.
Yeah, and I, I think I'm, I'm right behind you, because I did, so congratulations to you. So, so you want me to put congratulations? I put, well, yield, yield his time to the next person, but- I put, well, yield, yield his time to the next person, but we're going to scratch that.
Yeah, let's scratch that and go congratulations.
Well, if nothing else, this meeting, I need a motion to adjourn.
I would like the motion to adjourn.
I second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, I will. Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Meeting-